Good morning. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the June 22nd, 2021 school board meeting to order. Kami, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougal.
Present.
Mrs. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
Mrs. Campbell.
Present.
While masks are not optional, we will continue to respect social distancing and cleaning guidelines and protocols. We will now hold a moment of silence in memory of the loss of one of our BPS family members, Brian Meisenberg, a teacher from Gemini Elementary. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your pride for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of our community who'd like to start us this morning. Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, I just have a quick one. I just wanted to say a big shout out and thank you to the Brevard Zoo. I had the pleasure of attending their event with Ms. Campbell to get a very exclusive tour of their turtle trek and where they take the sea turtles, rehabilitate them. We got to see them do a procedure on the sea turtles, which was a really awesome experience. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to stay for the rest of it, and so Ms. Campbell is gonna give them a shout out for the rest of that wonderful event. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Campbell, I guess you're up next.
I know, nice segue. So, the ribbon cutting part at the end was really exciting because they showed how the turtle tech was gonna work. It's not just part of the zoo, they're actually demonstrating the work that is going on, that's partnerships with the zoo, with Northrop Grumman, and some of our schools and our students who have been able to be a part of it. So, they highlighted specifically Bayside High School, but also Edgewood, who had several students there, who have done some of the work in training the artificial intelligence that's going to be flying out over the ocean with the cameras on drones and identifying where their turtles are and what kind of turtles they are. And so, the Edgewood students got to be a part of that, and one of the teachers got up and shared, "So, shout out to our Edgewood programs and our Bayside programs, we're getting to be a part of that," and for our community partners who allowed them, kind of mentored them in that process too. So, that was really fun. The other, I just wanna give, again, since this is last board meeting for the musicals, shout out to our Summer Fine Arts Theater Workshop. Make sure that you go on to our website and get tickets for Singin' in the Rain at Merritt Island and/or, I'm gonna do both, Big Fish at Satellite High School, which is the first, the second, both at seven o'clock in the evening, and then Saturday, the third, at two o'clock in the afternoon. So, grab those tickets. And then, I just, we had the strategic planning retreat last Monday, and I don't know if I was gonna say something, I don't wanna steal too much thunder, but I just appreciate our staff, particularly Robin Novelli, for putting that together, where all the director level up got to just relook at how far we've come. And it was exciting, Dr. Mullins, to hear you share that in a year when, you know, we thought we were gonna say, "Well, this didn't get done and that didn't get done because of COVID," that we actually had foot on the accelerator and saw a lot of progress. So, really proud of our staff and thank Mr. Novelli and his team for putting together that day.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Thank you all.
I just have one thing. I wanna give a shout out to Student Services Department for the first ever Mental Wellness Conference, where about 175 people attended. So, a shout out to Chris Moore, Jenna Jenkins, and Kelly Sarara. I hope I said Kelly's name right. Did I mess it up? Chris. Oh, I did mess it up. I'm so sorry, Kelly. But anyhow, it was well attended. I was able to make it to one of the events, one of the conferences. So, thank you to the Student Services Team for putting such a great conference on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Mr. Susan?
So, got a couple of things. The first one is, is that I've been working really hard on the jobs, right? So, the city of Melbourne, and with Ms. Rutledge, who is absolutely amazing, but the city of Melbourne right now is looking for a series of kids to come in and work some of the jobs that they have inside there, both with construction and permitting and all of that stuff. She took it, ran with it. DRB Packaging, packaging company right here in Rockledge, small shop, maybe 30, 40 people, great works with the kids. Ms. Rutledge took it, ran with it. ABC, Associated Builders and Contractors, asked me to come in and speak the other day at their Space Coast Collaborative Meeting, which they had. This is the first time everybody's been back, right? So, everybody showed up, and they are in the process of putting together what will be the first ever construction school competition between all of our schools. So, it's gonna be pretty cool to see as we move through it, we talked about it for a couple of years, but they're gonna come in and they're gonna say, "Okay, Melbourne, Palm Bay, Space Coast, all of you guys, if you'd like to be involved in this competition," and the kids would learn how to pour footers, put in electrical stuff, stuff like that, and compete against each other and have some fun. I thought that was really cool, right? That'll be like March, April sometime. Also, the Plumbers Union got ahold of Ms. Rutledge, and they're gonna give kids jobs out at Kennedy Space Center. They hire about 70 a year coming out of there, so it's a direct pipe coming straight out of there. They go to school for apprenticeships up in Daytona State College, they spend the Saturday there, and then they work all week long inside of the Kennedy Space Center, because that's where a lot of the union jobs are at. I wanted to say thank you to the organizations that were putting together what's known as the O'Gally Corridor Coalition. Because of the huge poverty and need in our area, a lot of the kids that are inside of the O'Gally Corridor are at a huge deficit, and we've got organizations like Family Promise, the churches, everybody that are coming together, and we're going to drive resources that are needed for the O'Gally area. It's something that when we did that local feed, all of those kids came, when COVID hit and we went to that mobile feed, all of these organizations came in and did that. And then, I've been talking to, and I talked to Dr. Mullins about it, and I'm gonna try to push it off. One of the things we always talk about is, what a big deal with me is, is my culture. So, like, we talk about everybody else's culture, we talk about that stuff, but I was talking about who we are as individuals, who's been something that the organization's been trying to get towards. So, what I'm trying to do is, is in the next six months, I'd love us to honor who we are also, so that we're all collaboratively together. So, my heritage being Italian, your heritage being Scottish, find out where our roots came from and talk about it, together as a group, so that we're a big coalition together. And that's the things that we've been working on. Good, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins?
I'd just like to highlight an event we had last week at our Clear Lake Educational Center, the groundbreaking, or I shouldn't say groundbreaking, the ribbon cutting of our manufacturing building that is probably one of the greatest examples of entire community collaboration, coming together and making a great opportunity available for the young people in our community. It began with our Adult Education Program, reaching out to our representatives, our delegates, and in this case, the late Senator Dorothy Huchel, who represents most northern part of Brevard and Volusia, who, that seat is now served by Senator Tom Wright. But, at the time, in 2017, we began conversations, and Senator Huchel took to the legislature a request for a $1.5 million appropriation to build, to put in a facility to support and expand our manufacturing, training programs, apprenticeships, and so on for our community. And that appropriation was approved, and we just finished constructing that building in the last several months, and we're launching it for access for our community. And what is so powerful is Adult Education, Brevard Public Schools, our local delegates, Eastern Florida State College, our local businesses, all came together to make this facility a reality, and now we're very excited to bring it to life with our future workforce coming and receiving the learnings, the credentials, and the industry experience so that they can go out and get great jobs in our community. So, I said that day that this is certainly a demonstration of the legacy of the late Senator Dorothy Huchel, and I'm sure she is smiling down on the effort and seeing it come to fruition and being a vital resource to our community. So, thank you. It was a great event, and thank you to the board members for being there as well.
Mr. Susan?
I wanted, I've forgotten about your great presentation at the Space Coast League of Cities. So, Dr. Mullins came in, gave a great presentation over where we're at, what we did over COVID strategies, and I literally had no less than 10 people come up and say, "Hey, can I get a copy of that? Can I get that presentation?" Because that was amazing. They were, that was a great job that you did. Every one of the people that were in there understood what we've been going through, because we've been kinda quiet in here about what we've been doing, and now they're starting to find out. And they're really excited to come in October to the ethics training, as far as the Space Coast League of Cities and all the city managers and county managers to come here so that we can do ethics training, but then we can also tease them and show off a little bit of our school. So, it's gonna be some good stuff, but this big shout out goes to you, Dr. Mullins, you did a great job presenting. So, travel and tour show for you for the next couple of weeks.
All right. I have some very exciting news out of the north end of the county. I don't know how many of you all saw, but our boys and girls bowling team from Astronaut High School went to the national competition for bowling. And our girls did well, they ended up not placing, but our boys team placed third in the entire nation for bowling.
Nice.
Yes. Super exciting. And even better, Logan Harvey was identified as the 2021 United States High School Bowling National Champion, the best high school, male high school bowler in the entire country on his individual bowling. So, yeah. So, congratulations to Logan. And apparently, it was, it was kind of a, I think he came in, like, he entered in, he was in like sixth place after qualifying, and then he moved up to five, and then four, and then he moved back, and then, like, in the final round, he took it. His last game was 2:57, and that's the game that captured the title for him. So, looks like exciting competition and great recognition for our astronaut bowling team and specifically for Logan. So, congratulations, Logan. Also, wanted to give a shout out, I know you all have heard me talk about my concerns with the fluoride being removed from the water in MEMS. Last night, Commissioner Pritchett hosted a town meeting in MEMS, and there were two panels. One panel was pro-fluoride, one panel was anti-fluoride, and no decision has been made. She's determined that she is going to do a survey in the MEMS water bills in next month, and if a super majority of people decide that they want fluoride to still be in their water, then I guess she will reverse her decision to have removed it. But, all of that to say, I went just to observe for part of the meeting, and we were incredibly well represented at the meeting by Dr. Doakes, who is from Endeavor Elementary, and she gave some phenomenal information about the importance of dental care and dental health to academic success, and some very specific examples of children at Endeavor who have had dental problems and have gotten support to address those problems, and how it has really changed things for them, everything from, you know, one, not being willing to talk in class and having their head down all the time and not willing to smile for pictures, and through our community partnership school, they were able to get, I think it was like 10 children, actually went and had dental surgery through the supports. She talked about, you know, the challenge of transportation and the lack of pediatric dental care in our county, and just did a really great job of explaining exactly why this is such an important issue for us. And so, like I said, don't know what the final outcome is going to be, I guess it will depend on those, the vote of the residents of MEMS. But I was very, very happy to see that there was someone there that was speaking very knowledgeably about the challenges that this may bring. So, thank you to her for being there and being a part of that conversation.
Ms. Belford, can I follow that real quick?
Sure.
Mr. Gibbs, one of the problems that I'm seeing is, is that if they're gonna shut off the water with fluoride to individuals inside of MEMS in the residential area, I'm assuming that that's gonna shut down the commercial end too, which includes our schools. I don't know if the decision-making authority from the county or the city has decision-making authority over who and what we want for our schools. Is there a way to find that out? Actually, as a, I am, I would request, but I need to also support from the board, I can't just lob this thing out there, but I would like to find out if we have any decision-making authority over our schools' water being unfluorided and not. Does that make sense to you?
Uh, okay.
Is that okay? I don't wanna ask that without support from the board. Is that okay? Okay, sorry. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. That is going to bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and members of the board, on this morning's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, two presentations, 17 consent items, and two action items. Changes made to the agenda since it was first released to the public on June 15th are as follows. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations has received revisions, as did item F15 on instructional staff recommendations. Item F18 and F19 on division reorganization plans are additions.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan. Second by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
No.
There we go.
Mine's moving now.
I have four of you.
There it is. That's 'cause that heater's talking about leaving. I hope she heard that.
And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about our administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, there are 11 individuals under this category for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan. Second by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about our presentations?
Yes, as I make my way to the podium, if you can be a minute.
Yep.
Ms. Belford and members of the board, this morning, I'd like to provide you with, as my superintendent's report, actually, two presentations that I anticipate the board and our community will find very interesting and exciting as we are moving forward. But first is our BPS COVID-19 mitigation strategies for the anticipated 21-22 school year, which is also as a topic for the workshop following the board meeting for additional board discussion, if the board would like to have some, but certainly, you'll take any questions at the conclusion of this information. So, our reopening task force came back together. I hesitate saying reopening task force, because we are long past reopening. We are all thrilled that we are continuing our educational opportunities for students, and we all look forward to a quick journey back to, well, what we have often called normal. But as we work through the anticipations of bringing all of our students back into our schools full-time, we continue to look through the lens of our equity framework as we began the work going into COVID, knowing that some of our students would experience considerable disruptions in the services that they would provide as a result of agencies, facilities, opportunities being limited, and access being compromised. And we continue that equity lens as we move forward in anticipation of our students coming back to us, having student achievement data from the recent student, the Florida Student Standards Assessment, helping us align that, apply that, and triangulate that, if you will, to our other progress monitoring tools to best meet the needs of our kids as they return to our schools. But we will also keep in place some of the best practices, if you will, that we've learned through this experience, and continue some of our mitigation strategies. For example, extraneous furniture, we'll be mindful of not allowing our classrooms to be cluttered and unnecessarily compromise social distancing where appropriate. Evaluating our hallway traffic patterns and continuing to modify those as needed to minimize that face-to-face interaction. Continuing to make Plexiglas available to our staff and teachers as they find a need for them, for their classrooms. Our water fountains will continue to restrict them to filling water bottles for use. Our clinic spaces, allowing for separation of students. You know, many of these things are just good practices for mitigating the transmission of any illness, whether it's a cold or the regular flu or those types of things. So, we're going to continue to maintain some of these strategies just as good practice. Our facilities team continue to prioritize HVAC filter changes, as well as our custodial strike team will remain in place at least for the next year to be responsive and supportive of our schools. In terms of daily operations, our cafeteria staff, custodians, will continue their practice of amplified clean procedures and protocols. As you know, we have those high-touch surfaces that are identified and prioritized for regular cleaning throughout the day. Our buses will be returning to full occupancy, but we will, our drivers are committed to continuing those intermittent cleaning strategies or practices across our buses in between the routes, elementary, middle, and high school. Technology, educational technology, will continue to obtain the equipment that we provided to students and families, getting that scrubbed, if you will, both literally and digitally, and getting them equipped and ready to utilize in our schools. I wanna emphasize this bullet here, because if there is anything that we felt the impact of, it was the support and the engagement we were able, or I should say, not able to have at the level we prefer and want to have with our parents and our community and our schools, by having to limit access to our schools. So, we will be returning to more in-person engagement opportunities. I'm not sure if it's on this slide or one coming up. Volunteering, we'll open up volunteers to be able to get in our schools for those planned activities that they've had over in the past to support our teachers, to support our media centers, and our classrooms, and really reengage in a very robust way, parents and families and community in our schools. We are looking forward to and anxiously anticipating that level of involvement and engagement in our schools. Other things is we continue to encourage families to utilize our e-pay process for the cafeteria, so that students don't have to deal with the exchange of money. Our locker rooms will be reopened and fully accessible for our students and certainly cleaned regularly. Professional development, we'll continue to support our staff at the beginning of the year through our normal orientation portal in cleaning and mitigation protocols across our organization. We'll also continue our support of staff in the development of blended learning instructional experiences. Let me spend a moment on this, because some see as, "Oh, are we going back to e-learning" or hybrid and those types of that? That is not what this is referencing. We had blended learning professional development in place before we ever knew of COVID-19. That is the practice of integrating and utilizing instructional technology, computers and digital resources in the classroom to complement the learning that's going on there. And then, of course, we'll continue our professional development for trauma-informed practices. The reality is, is our kids continue to face and be confronted with every possible form of trauma out when they leave us, when they're not in the environment of our schools, and our school psychologists, our social workers, our school counselors, even our administrators become increasingly necessary to respond to and meet the needs of our kids as they face things like food security or homelessness, or even other tragedies in their home or community life when they're not with us. Of course, student health will be a priority as we, in an ongoing way, review the needs of our medically fragile students to ensure that we're being responsive and attentive to their individual health plans and the necessary responses for our kids in those situations. But we always will depend on and ask that our parents be the first line of defense in monitoring the daily health of their child. Some of the provisions we'll continue to make available for our schools, certainly the access and availability of both adult and pediatric face masks, as they might need for any individual who would want one, recognizing that our mask policy or math, mask, practice will be voluntary for both employees and students moving forward. But we'll also ensure that we have PPE and hand sanitizer and cleaning products and resources available. The misting machines became very utilized over the last several months, and we continue to have the cleaning product that goes in those machines readily available for our schools and so on, and they can order those directly from our warehouse. Academic support and academic response, which we will talk more and more about moving forward, really in the frame of learning acceleration. Some have used or referenced learning recovery, learning remediation. We are taking a much more proactive and ambitious approach, and that is learning acceleration for every one of our students, recognizing that our kids will come to us with a variety of educational, academic, learning needs, and we need to identify what those specific needs are for our kids and really target and hone the response and support them. Some of our students will have had very little, if any, academic learning interruption over the last year. We need to continue to accelerate them forward from where they are. And others, other students will come to us having experienced potentially some very significant learning loss or interrupted learning over the past several months, and will need to be equally responsive and attentive to supporting our kids in those needs. We'll continue our progress monitoring in ELA, English Language Arts and Math, for our students three times a year. Fortunately, the federal stimulus funding remains available for us to financially make our learning acceleration plans feasible, make them a reality for our students and families. Our schools continue to receive funding going into next year to support those extra academic learning opportunities for students. Our summer school is in full session now, and we continue to provide transportation. Kudos to our schools and our transportation teams, not knowing exactly who, when, and where our kids would be coming back to us or coming to us for summer learning acceleration. Our schools and transportation teams worked together so well to provide that service to our kids. As well as, we have found the invaluable utilization of our virtual or digital resources for our kids and families, and that will continue to be a priority for us as we move forward, utilizing, implementing, and making our families aware of the digital textbooks, digital resources that we have available for all of our students and families moving forward as we work together to accelerate every student's learning experience. So, student activities, I'll begin by referencing our former Return to Activity Plan. That has been sunset for this summer, and moving forward, we are proceeding with our, I'll use the word "normal," student activities plan. That includes visitors and volunteers coming to our schools for structured activities and supports. That'll be planned with the leaders in our schools and working with our volunteers and so on. Principals may approve in-county field trips as consistent with our board policy, as well as our leading and learning directors will review and approve out-of-county field trips, and of course, any out-of-state field trips, activities, and so on, will continue to require board approval moving forward. We ask our principals to continue to consider mitigation strategies when approving large group activities, certainly group activities, certainly taking into consideration what are good practices, what are best practices, just to keep us all increasingly safe and healthy as we move forward. And continue to, when feasible, can hold or consider what might be high-risk events outdoors instead of indoors, if there's a feasible alternative, without inhibiting those opportunities. There are some items still under consideration as we continue to walk out these days this summer, make our board and the community aware. We are continuing to evaluate and await updated contact tracing and quarantining of student practices. We continue to remain in close collaboration and discussion with our local Department of Health. And then, of course, the practice of quarantining students, what that'll look like moving forward. As vaccinations become increasingly available for younger students right now, ages 12 and up, certainly want our community to be aware of that possibility or that resource for our kids, their kids as well. Our clinic protocols regarding students who display symptoms of COVID-19, we are continuing to evaluate, what will that look like moving forward? We had very extensive practices in place last school year. The extent of the necessity of those extensive practices is still under review, and we'll bring any future decisions to the board in the future as we head towards next school year. Evaluating the case reporting and dashboard management of our COVID dashboard, if you, as you recall, it is continuing to be maintained through summer school. Decision has not been made at this point. Moving forward, if that'll be continued in the next school year, we have seen a significant reduction in the number of positive cases or transmission cases and quarantines, certainly from the result of having far fewer students in our schools for summer school, but also as individuals become increasingly vaccinated. We had to modify, we were given state support to evaluate our mandatory drill process of our evacuation of emergencies. The board is aware that we, they were not eliminated, they could not be, they couldn't not be done, but we were provided some flexibility in how we did those emergency drills. For example, we have safe space areas designated in every one of our classrooms where students assemble in the classroom in the event of a crisis or threatening situation on campus. We didn't utilize students moving to those closed spaces and compromising social distancing. We used directive strategies in the past, but we'll be evaluating what that looks like moving forward. And then, of course, the unplanned or visits of parents and/or guests on campus and what that'll look like moving forward. I bring back the responsibilities of parents and legal guardians. We presented this, now it seems almost like a lifetime ago, as we entered into the era of COVID last year, and certainly we continue to uphold those as our parents, again, are critical in helping us support them and support our kids with accurate information and contact information, promptly picking up students and caring to their health needs as they become, as we become engaged in that as necessary through our clinics and so on. And ask that our parents continue to provide us the most accurate and complete medical information, and ultimately emphasizing the partnership we need, we must have with our parents and families, even as we move, hopefully, completely and fully back into a period of normalcy, if you will, in the 21, 22 school year. With that, I would ask the board, do they have any questions?
Mr. Susan?
I always want to go after everybody else.
I was just looking for who was moving to their mic, Ms. Campbell.
So, thank you for all of the work that you guys have done on that, and I had to say I can attest to the fact of the summer programs that are going on, the, as far as activities. I've been to basketball camp, string camp, girls are in the musical, several things going on, and everybody's doing a really good job. I know that we, before all of this started last March, the security department had just obtained a mobile fingerprinting unit, and we talked about, you know, getting that volunteer process back up and running. So, are we going to be able to use that as we start this next school year off in recruiting volunteers to go out to different places and get that process, especially for the people who live in the north end and the south end and come into Bureau, it's difficult.
So, the simple and most concise response is yes, yes, and yes. And here's what I mean by that. Yes, we have gotten the mobile fingerprinting apparati back out of the closet, and we're getting it ready to deploy, but we are also looking at expanding that effort because we want to make the access and opportunity for our community, our families and parents to become, either become volunteers for the first time or renew their volunteership with our schools increasingly accessible. So, we are looking to add additional mobile units so that we could deploy multiple opportunities across the district, being so large and long, so that our community has easy accessibility to get going through the background screening, fingerprinting process, and return to being part of, part of our schools from the inside out, if you will.
Good, and you know I love that. So, another question I had, and this is my last one, is do we have a kind of a ballpark figure of how many students are engaged in summer learning at the elementary, I mean, as far as the summer school? I know we have lots of activities going on, but specifically the summer school programs, do we have ballpark?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm gonna, I would lob out a number, but I'm gonna look back to my leading and learning team.
How much?
Three thousand in elementary, secondary. It's a moving target in secondary.
Target.
Fifteen hundred, so forty-five hundred students across elementary and secondary. Moving target in secondary because kids come in, they make up, they recover, they may not be there for the full time, so it's, and then we get more kids in and that sort of thing. So, that's why secondary is a little, little more of a moving target.
Awesome, thank you.
Ms. Jenkins, are you good?
So, Dr. Mullins, I had a couple of quick questions. The first one is, is we had discussed this before, foreign exchange students are allowed back?
I'm sorry?
Foreign exchange students are allowed back?
Yes, we're working with our partners, with foreign exchange students, and giving them the opportunity to be in our schools. Yes, sir.
Beautiful. And then, you had a couple of calls from teachers as far as when a kid goes on quarantining and e-learning, can you discuss some of that real quick, what that looks like for next year too?
Well, that is an area we're continuing to evaluate. We don't know exactly what the quarantine rules might be come August, August 10th, when our students return. So, right now, we're maintaining our quarantine practices through the guidance of the Department of Health, but if those practices or guidelines change, we'll certainly utilize any changes in moving forward. So, we're seeing, again, a far reduced number of students either quarantined because they tested positive and/or because they were in contact with a positive case.
So, we're not, there's no active plan moving forward to have kids, having teachers e-learning inside the classroom while those kids are quarantined?
Yeah, we are currently not discussing an e-learning alternative at this point for next school year and haven't engaged in that consideration at this point. We're optimistic it wouldn't be necessary.
Perfect. And then, dropping off the items at school, because I got myself in trouble. I tried to drop something off for my kid and got in trouble. We're still allowing that to happen next year, right? We can bring them there and drop them off.
Next.
Right. Yeah, my daughter, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I didn't emphasize that at the beginning. The reopening plan
Right.
sunsets June 30th through the, because it applied to the reopening of our schools for 2021. These will be the practices that I just presented will be the only things that remain moving forward.
So, unless something comes across, it goes back to normal, everything else is out.
Correct.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
I just have really a quick comment as opposed to a question, Dr. Mullins. Had the opportunity to speak with Chris Moore about some of the unknowns for next year and some of the challenges that still remain for us, like the quarantining guidelines, not knowing what's going to happen with those things, but also support for our students who may not be able to be in a school without people around them being masked, because that's a reality for some of our kids. And I just, I, you know, want to give a shout out to Chris Moore and her team, and really all of, all of our team members that have worked so hard to consider just about every aspect of the challenges that we will continue to face next year in some way, shape, or form, and even though we don't have all of the answers at this point in time, I have great confidence that we have all of the right people in the right seats on the bus and doing, doing the work to make sure that they are addressing all of those things and not failing to consider any of our kids in focusing on our every. So, thank you, Ms. Moore and the rest of the team. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Melford, and I echo your appreciation and compliments of our team. They've done a phenomenal job and remained ready to respond to every, with every bit of excellence we can. Any other questions from the board? All right, then I'm going to transition into the next presentation, and that I am absolutely thrilled and excited to share with the board. I know you've already gotten a spoiler alert, a sneak preview of our Cognia accreditation review. I don't believe our community has, so I'm thrilled to formally present the results of our five-year accreditation process. To Ms. Campbell's earlier comments about the accomplishments this year, in spite of the challenges of working around and through, navigating through the year of COVID, our team has continued on an exemplary path of supporting students and so on. And it's easy for me to sit there knowing all of the intricate work that goes on across our dynamic and complex district, but it's so validating when a third-party entity, a nationally recognized entity comes in and does a deep dive into your operations, into your work and your core mission, and comes out and gives you feedback. That validates some of the praise that I provide and the board certainly provides on a regular basis. So, I've given the community a spoiler alert that, yes, we are accredited for another five years as a district, but I think there is so much to celebrate throughout the feedback we received in this experience. I want to take a moment and talk about what is system accreditation? It is a, it is a very rigorous, research-based dive into the organization, looking for evidence-based criteria, certainly research-based strategies. It examines every element of Brevard Public Schools or any district school system. But I want to emphasize, or I want to note the third bullet there, where the process determines how well the parts work together to carry out the institution's vision and meet the needs of every learner. That is our mission statement in and of itself, and meeting the needs of every learner. So, I'm excited to share some of the feedback. The process included an extensive interview cadre of over 500 stakeholders. Over the course, my kudos to our team that accommodated Cognia's requests for all of these processes, all done virtually, over 500 stakeholder interviews across the organization that included myself, the board members, top-level leaders in the organization, but also our teachers, our students, our parents, and community members. It isn't unusual for me to be at an event like the Space Coast League of Cities and have a parent come and say, hey, how did that, how did that review go? I was one of the interviewees in that process, and I have recently been able to boast of our accomplishment. But it also, not only was a virtual process, it included 18 different school sites across the district and across all levels, very comprehensive. Here you see how the organization, how Brevard Public Schools was assessed, three key components, leadership capacity, learning capacity, and research capacity, and within each of those components are several standards. And I'll give the board a review and the community an overview of what those are specifically in a moment, but each standard is then evaluated and assessed with one of four ratings, from red to blue. As you can imagine, red is not where you want to be. Blue is the most affirming rating that you can receive, and they recognize that as impacting or demonstrates where practice is producing clear results that positively impact the institution. And even the green recognitions of improving, I feel, I think that term "improving" is a little misleading, because if you look at the description, it still clearly pinpoints quality practices that are improving and meet the standards that are being assessed throughout the evaluation. So, I know you're wondering, okay, what does the, the ratings look like for Brevard Public Schools? Well, let's start with leadership capacity. Here you see 11 standards that were assessed across all these different areas, and in the far right, you see the color coding of the feedback we received. Ultimately, of the 11 standards, eight standards received the highest rating in the leadership capacity evaluation and assessment of the organization. And three of the standards, albeit not at the impacting level, still received the improving, the improving level of the organization. I want to highlight one that I referenced in the COVID mitigation strategies update, and that is standard 1.8. I don't know how clearly it's depicted on the screen there. It's the eighth one down on the list, engaging stakeholders. And that is a priority for us moving forward. It was still recognized at the improving level. Some of the feedback we received was, it's difficult to pivot and respond to engaging stakeholders when we've had limited access to our campuses, but to emphasize my earlier comments, we are fully committed to re-energize and elevate engaging stakeholders in the school year moving forward in our practices. The next area of learning capacity, again, all blue and green areas, eight standards rated at the highest level, and four being recognized at the improving level, but those, those areas of improving being recognized as the equitable learning opportunities, the culture innovation, and curricular high expectations. As we continue to commit to our lens of equity for kids, high expectations for all of our students. We know as educators that that is a critical and key component to building students up to not only striving for, but achieving all of the opportunities that are before them, and we will continue to make that a priority as we work with our kids in our schools and our families to support them. And then, finally, the final category of resource capacity results, again, very favorable, where four standards were recognized as impacting and four others are at the improving level. That is the extent of the standards. Notice you did not see any red or yellow scores as part of the feedback we received from the assessment. So, let me break this down for you a little bit, because this is, this is some powerful feedback. The overall scoring range of a district through the accreditation review process is anywhere from 100 to 400 points. In 2016, when we went through accreditation previously, we received a score of 250 points. We did earn district accreditation even through that review with a score of 250, and at the time, the average range or score of institutions that were evaluated by Cognia, which is nationwide, thousands of school districts, was 278. So, at the time, in 2016, we were rather below the average score of other educational districts across the country. But this year, in 2021, we received an overall score of 345.81 points, significant improvement and strides since our accreditation evaluation five years ago. And when you look at, well, what we received an overall score of 345.81 points. Significant improvement and strides since our accreditation evaluation five years ago. And when you look at, well, what does that mean in comparison to other school districts around the country? The average ranged from 278 to 283. Clearly a significant, I'll call outlier, in the positive direction of the demonstration of effectiveness of Brevard Public Schools in serving our kids and their family. So to take a look at some of the bullets of feedback that we received from the assessment, we always celebrate the accomplishments, but we likewise take time to reflect on the opportunities for improvement. And this, although we had much to celebrate, is no exception. But I, I would be remiss if we didn't highlight some of the feedback we received from the accreditation assessment team. That BPS has created a culture permeated by a growth mindset where trust defines relationships. That's affirming because we know trust is the foundation of community and school collaboration. Validation of a strong commitment to the vision and mission of the organization as it stands before us. But also having an active and informed leadership by the school board. The accreditation team specifically acknowledged the leadership of our school board, particularly the unique role of being champions for particular elements of our strategic plan, not excluding board members from the entire strategic plan, but each of you doing your own deep dive, if you will, into components of the strategic plan and bringing your perspective to those updates as we move through. But the accreditation team acknowledging that, that intricate involvement, that ongoing engagement of the board with the organization, as well as the structures that are in place to engage stakeholders in different ways. Additional feedback we received was a commendation for our vision for excellent instruction, which was developed and put into place within the last five years, as well as our strategic plan that drives and strives to meet the needs of every student. And this third bullet, I think, is really a testament of our culture as an organization. And that is a commitment to continuous improvement that is both defined by the Florida Department of Education, that we utilize and implement through our school improvement plans at every one of our schools across the district. As well as the parents' feedback indicating a strong trust element that has been built across the community with our schools, schools and the school district. But where can we pause and say, where do we go from here? Where do we continue to improve until we realize our mission? The assessment team acknowledged and emphasized that program evaluation and, and data disaggregation by subgroups will be critical as we transition back to full-time learning for our students so that we can, in fact, meet the individual needs of our kids. But also, they dove deeper in recognizing that there is work needed to be done in an area that just validated what we already knew, in developing common-wide vocabulary, definition, definitions, valid metrics, in assisting the district how we can better attain our mission of serving every student with excellence. So again, I'll come back to where we, where I started, and that is congratulations, School Board of Brevard Public Schools. You serve a school district that has received five-year district accreditation, and not just by a little, but by a significant score and feedback from the Cognia Accreditation Company. I'll certainly answer any questions, but if we can take advantage of a photo op, we'd like to present the board our district accreditation certificate from the Cognia Organization.
Right. I will just say, Dr. Mullins, thank you for your recognition of the work of the board. But I think we have to realize that all of those folks that you listed, the, are certainly our, our district-level leadership, our principals, our assistant principals, our teachers, our support staff at the schools, they truly are the ones that, that have made this possible. So, well, we are certainly happy to support. I don't think that, that we can necessarily take the credit for that. I think it's the whole team that just has done a phenomenal job. So, thank you for that recognition, though.
You're welcome. And thank you. And if I may do a plug for our, we, we had a, a whole team just putting together the process for the accreditation visit. And I'm not going to get all the names wrong. I'm not going to try and know Janet Stevenson, Marilyn, Chappie, Lena Wibelt, and all of the school leaders that had to accommodate and facilitate and schedule and arrange and so on. And not to mention the responsiveness of our stakeholders to be a part of the process. So thank you for that recognition. You know I'm very proud of our team and the effort that, that they commit to every single day to make our mission a reality. So thank you for that recognition.
Thank you. Board members, if you would join Dr. Mullins down front for a photo op, please?
Yeah, I was just waiting for ladies first.
Yeah. If you'd like, we certainly can.
I guess we could.
That's a big deal. Big deal.
It's a very big deal. Awesome news. All right, we are now at public comments. We have only three speakers lined up to speak today. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. As chairman, I may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, it's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, I may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or are watching from home. Please note that in order to proceed with the business portion of the meeting, board members will not have opportunity to respond to speakers during or immediately following public comments. I may, however, request follow-up. Let's begin with our first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you'll be discussing. This morning we have Catherine Delaney, followed by Anthony Calucci, and then Patrick Darville. Catherine, if you would approach the mic?
Good morning. I am here to talk about a couple of things. The first thing I wanted to mention is that critical race theory is definitely being taught in our schools. I have proof of it. I have a worksheet from a third-grade classroom in our school. And it's also being taught in our professional developments. CRT in the curriculum is not labeled CRT. So it's being slipped into different worksheets without, there's no label that says "critical race theory." So for somebody to say that it's absolutely not being taught in our schools, it's, it's wrong. So I have an example of that, and it's stating, imagine you've been asked to go to a new school where you are the only member of your race and you are not welcome. That was a prompt for a third grader to have to write about. To me, that is spreading racism. Why are we teaching our kids that they're the only one of their race and they're not welcome? Like, why is that idea even putting, being put into their heads? Third graders don't think about that. They think about who's nice to them at recess, who has cool shoes, I like your backpack. That's what they think about. They don't look at skin color. Okay, so, and again, in the very agenda that was presented today at this meeting, there's an equity statement. Equity is a kind idea, but it's impractical. We can't even afford textbooks for all of our students. Who's going to pay for the equity? If we want to achieve, it's by hard work, being kind, and seeking out opportunities. This is what we need to teach our kids. We need to teach them to go out and get what they want. Nobody is going to hand them anything in life. Charity should not, should come from the heart. It should not be forced by the government or this board. And the next thing I want to talk about is I appreciate that the, the board doing the right thing and making masks optional. But it's still on the table for you guys to change your minds at any time. There was a group of parents that sent out masks to be analyzed, and all sorts of different things were found on these masks. Pneumonia, tuberculosis, sepsis, meningitis, encephalitis, just to name a few. No viruses were found on the masks, none. So the masks aren't stopping the prevention of the spread. It's a virus. It goes through the mask. And we have science to back that now. So that's, I just please ask that you guys, you know, take that policy out. It cannot be on the table. It's not your role to force our kids to wear medical devices.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you.
Mr. Calucci?
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. On Friday, we concluded the vote on our memorandum of agreement. I am pleased to report that 99.7% of those that voted cast a yes vote. There were 2,030 yes votes and seven no votes. Let me say that again. 2,030 yes votes and only seven no votes. Our teachers are truly grateful to the board and superintendent for taking this bold action to show appreciation for the extremely difficult work they've done this year. This board gets a lot of flack for some of its decisions, but I truly hope that this nearly unanimous vote validates the decision you made to reward Brevard's outstanding educators. This is not the end of the difficult work that this board and union must do to improve compensation for our teachers. I do appreciate that since Dr. Mullins has been at the helm, he has shown commitment to prioritize teacher pay. However, the compensation issue has not gone away. Florida's average teacher salary ranked 49th out of 50 in a recent report by Business Insider. That in it, in and of itself is an ugly statistic. And when you drill down on Brevard's data, it doesn't get prettier. 2020-21 FL DOE data noted that Brevard's teachers are the second-most experienced group in the state, yet our average pay was still below the average and median salaries in Florida. When looking at our comparable counties, our average pay still trails Seminole, Indian, and Orange Counties, Indian River County. We would, we wouldn't be satisfied with being fifth out of seventh for our academics. We cannot be content with being fifth in paying our teachers. I understand the hard work and difficult decisions that need to be done to improve compensation, a job the Florida Legislature made more complicated this year by putting up roadblocks to improving veteran teacher pay. But I also understand the importance of making sure educators can live comfortably so they can concentrate on their invaluable work and not concentrate on how they're going to pay utility bills, pay the unexpected medical bill, or fill up their gas tank. As you start building budgets and plan for negotiations, I continue to urge this board to keep compensation as a top priority. Come September, I hope to be reporting such a favorable outcome once again. And as always, our union is willing to collaborate with BPS on this issue, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Calucci. Patrick?
Madam Chair, Dr. Mullins, members of the board, good morning. I'm Patrick Darville, Chairman of the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades Local 10-10, representing the support staff of Brevard County Schools. I'm here to bring the results of voting on the bonus offered by the board. There were 1,362 yes votes. There was one no vote. There were also 37 ballots that were signed by members of our group, but no selections were made. I wish to thank Dr. Green and the team at Labor Relations for their assistance in organizing this vote because it was summertime and it was rather difficult to get everyone to participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Darville. All right, that is going to move us into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are 17 agenda items under the consent agenda.
Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Hearing now, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, please vote. All right, we are going to voice vote on this one. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. We will now move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
The first item is department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
I'll stuck on the other one.
All right, so we will do a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
The next item is on procurement solicitation.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. All right, that is going to move us into board member discussion points. And we don't have anything listed for discussion points today, but I did want to, Ms. McDougall mentioned earlier, the mental health conference that took place.
Wellness.
Or mental, yes, mental wellness. Thank you for the correction. And I did have some constituents that reached out to me with some concerns about some of the information that was presented during that conference. So I spoke with Dr. Mullins, wanted to make sure that we had, had looked at things closely. Dr. Mullins, do you mind just kind of giving us an, an update on that? I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page on it.
Sure. So last week, Brevard Public Schools hosted a virtual conference for mental health and wellness for employees to participate in and take advantage of a host of different speakers that were provided around the country. One of the, the concerns that was brought to attention was a presentation that included a explicit reference to critical race theory with, but with, it was presented in context of one of 10 stressors that impact students. And, and I'm not going to suggest I'm an expert in all of these areas, but the, the frame or the context of the presentation was looking at how students face adverse childhood experiences, otherwise referenced as ACE, particularly from a trauma-informed perspective and equipping and helping our educators understand and be responsive to experiences that our kids have, hopefully not when they're with us, but what, what their environment is when they're not with us, but certainly become a part of who they are when they come to us in our schools. And the, the stressor that was particularly referenced was one titled "Racism, Discrimination, and Inequity" as a stressor that our students experience, and helping our educators understand what are some of the questions that we, they need to be asking and, and working with students. Things about what, what are identity-based stressors that the student is facing? What is the student's perspective as they talk with and support the student through whatever they may be bringing? What strengths do the students bring? And...
to districts, coming to the state, and making sure that we are evaluating that thoroughly as well. Ms. Belford, did that cover what you were hoping for or interested in?
It did, thank you. I think, you know, I think it's important to take things in context, right? So sometimes when we look at something, we make assumptions about what it is without the context around it. I, too, had the opportunity to go and look at those two presentations, and I think, you know, we have not shied away as a board or as a district from having difficult, sometimes uncomfortable conversations about what we need to do to support our students to success. And I think this is, that presentation was a great example of us understanding where our students are when they're coming to us and the lens with which they are engaging in their educational experience. And I think we've made a commitment that we're going to recognize those things. We're going to take the time to look at those things, and whether it's our African-American students, our Hispanic students, our English language learners, our special education students, those are the areas where we have very clearly identified through data, and I know the board is very aware of that data, that we have some gaps. And it was referenced as well in our accreditation, you know, validating that we have work to do in those areas. So just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, since we can't talk outside of the public setting in case you all had any concerns as well or had anyone reach out to you. Just wanted to make. Anyone have anything else for discussion topics?
I just kind of want to stem off of that a little bit. The prompt that was brought up, I just, I can't let that go. It's something that kind of irks me a little bit. We're going to hear about this constantly, critical race theory, obviously. Currently, critical race theory is not taught in any school district in the state of Florida. And so I just want to make that clear. Every time it's brought up, I have to say it every single meeting, I will. And that prompt that was brought up, it's just asking students to imagine themselves in another person's shoes. It teaches empathy. It teaches compassion. It teaches critical thinking. It teaches them how to look through the lens of another person. It does not teach racism. Race is not just skin color.
All right, guys, we're not doing back and forth.
Race is not just skin color. When you ask a prompt like that, or when there is a prompt like that, it's also speaking about culture. Some of our students who are Asian-Americans, Hispanic-Americans, immigrants of any other country, Native Americans, all of them, they all have to face discrimination sometimes. And so that is not teaching racism.
Once again, I'm going to ask that you all not interrupt the discussion of the board, okay? We're available afterwards if you'd like to speak to us, okay?
When we say that equity is a kind idea, you are absolutely correct, but it's also a moral obligation. And saying that it's a kind idea is just completely disregarding our students that have disabilities, 504s, IEPs, because equity, again, is not just about race. And the politicalization of equity and race is inappropriate. So how do we pay for it? When we spend just as much time and energy as we do here talking about a theory that doesn't exist in our school system, let's spend that time and energy together to speak to our local delegates and our state leaders to fund public education appropriately so that we can provide equal and equitable access to education to all of our students, whether it be race, disability, any of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Dr. Mullins, do you have anything else?
If I may, there was a reference by one of the speakers about textbooks and not having enough textbooks for our students. I would welcome further conversation about that. That is not our commitment as a school district, and certainly from the board, we have allocated the resources to obtain the textbooks that our students need, but certainly would, I just wanted to say that I'm certainly not aware of textbooks that are not available to our students and would want to get to the bottom of any suggestion that that would be the case, so.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. All right, there being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned, and we will convene our workshop shortly. We'll take about a five-minute break, okay?